Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, January 19th, meeting of the Board of Directors of the Dover School District. If you would please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have roll call, please?
Mr. Emig?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mrs. Mepford?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mr. Raughouser?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
And Mr. Cook?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mrs. Benko. Please bear with us. We are working with a brand-new system. This is our first time using this for meetings, so this is going to be an experience for all of us tonight. So just understand that we might be a little klutzy tonight with how this rolls. Next on our agenda is Presentations and Celebrations. I'll turn this over to Mr. Cherry at this point.
All right. Well, January is School Directors' Recognition Month, so we wanted to start our meeting by recognizing each one of our board members and thanking them for their commitment to our district. So I have a certificate and a little backpack for you, so I'm gonna call your name, and you can come on up and get your gift. So please join me in giving our Board of Directors a round of applause. Want me to keep on going?
Keep on going.
All right. As most of you know, in December, we had a reorganizational meeting that kicked off with kind of a business dinner. And kind of at the forefront of that were a lot of -- was a lot of talent that some of our students displayed in preparing a video for us. So at this time, I'm gonna invite Mr. Fareed to come up, man, and Tim as well, to talk to us a little bit about that. I know the students are here right now, so they just might want to address this, and we want to take the opportunity to watch the video again as well. All right. Well, actually, the students are the ones who did the work on the video, so it's okay. They're going to be the ones to present it. So I'll hand it off to China Falls and Sophie Barnes.
Okay. Hi, I'm China Falls. I'm president of the Galterians. And this is Dan Chason, Lance Boylan. We're a group of high schoolers that are trying to enact a positive climate in our school and a positive image in our community. And we were responsible for the PBIS rollout and the initiative of like the Proud Movement throughout all of our schools.
Hi, my name is Sophie Barnes. Earlier in the year, as the -- as a group of students, we were given a task of creating a district video. And this was a pretty broad statement for us. We weren't really sure where to head with this, so we really went down to the basics. And we really thought, why do we go to school? Why are we here? And in answering that, we came up with college, jobs, further education, et cetera. So we decided to go to each elementary school, each school in the district, in fact, and we interviewed a child from every grade, and we asked them those simple questions. What do they want to do with their lives? What do they hope to get out of this education? And their answers were really astounding, and we put them together and made a video. So we hope you enjoy.
I want to be an architect.
I want to be an engineer.
I want to be a screenplay writer.
I want to be a fireman.
I want to be a lawn care professional.
Musical theater performer.
An entrepreneur.
A psychologist.
A truck driver.
Safety manager.
A journalist.
I want to be a studio producer.
I want to be a graphic designer.
I want to be a veterinarian.
What was your first day of school like?
It was a little weirder than I thought it would be.
My first day of kindergarten, I was shocked.
I wasn't sure if the teacher would be nice.
I was a little nervous at first, but other than that, it was fun.
I was nervous because I thought I would have to make new friends.
I was kind of scared, but it ended up being fun.
What I like about school is math and the teachers.
I really like math class.
I'm awesome at math.
I really do like math because I love to be presented with a challenge.
I like when you walk in right at the beginning of the day, and everybody says hi, and it's pretty -- makes you feel good about yourself.
The friends and the like happy new faces we meet.
I like learning like information that will help me succeed in life in the future, like getting to a good college.
Social studies.
Special.
recess.
lunch.
When we have literacy stations.
I like everything about school. Everything's my favorite.
I like it when I first get to school because I know that it's a brand-new day, and anything that I did wrong the day before, it's all behind.
As I moved into seventh grade, into this school, to the intermediate school, like a lot of different things have changed over the years.
The schools have become bigger and more up-to-date. Kids like the iPads and the Promethean boards.
The iPads, that's a big help now because we can do a whole bunch more stuff.
This year, we have our own personal iPads that we get to take home. And I think all the teachers got Macs. So we're really starting to get more technologically involved, which I think is really gonna help with our education.
I think that all the teachers being helpful makes me successful.
The teachers, they help me a lot. Most, like if I'm having a bad day, some of them will help me, and that makes me happy. And then I get my grades up because they're helping me.
Definitely, the teacher's motivation helps a lot. I mean, really, my teachers are always telling me that we can do it if we put our minds to it, but if we start something, never to stop.
Some of the biggest challenges are finding time to do everything you want to do in high school because our high school has a lot of different opportunities you can do. So it's always to find time. Like I participate in sports. I'm involved in a lot of different clubs and organizations. So it's hard to find time for everything you want to.
I think it's one-upping what you did before because you give all that you can to one thing, but then having to do better the next time. So trying to excel. I think there's also the constant comparison game going on in high school between your peers and things like that. Because you kind of like get to that point where you're like, wow, it's really not about anyone else. It's really about me and my goals for my own life specifically. And you really find, I think, in high school what you're interested in. So that's the hardest battle, I think, is staying true to yourself and doing what you love.
I like how many opportunities there are. Like there's poetry appreciation and novel appreciation, and so many cool classes that you can immerse yourself in and what you're interested in. And I think that's the coolest part.
Well, we have a lot of like classes and a lot of different areas.
And we have a good ag program.
And I was in a Spanish competition at Schibensburg College. There was a modern languages competition. Competitive academics, where we travel, you know, all over the state.
Competitive academics. Model UN is probably one of my favorites.
There's people in my department that are just as enthusiastic, and that's really exciting to see everyone's like opinions and their creativity coming together.
A lot of our sports teams and even clubs have their own communities within the school. I just found mine within the music world, but there's definitely a bunch here, so. What do you want to be when you grow up?
A fireman.
A cop.
I want to drive planes and play football country.
I wanted to be an aeronautical engineer.
Go mechanic. I want to go into engineering.
I'm going into a degree in science or math.
I want to be a rocket engineer and design the first rocket to discover a new galaxy.
After I leave Dover High School, I plan to attend college and major in business administration with a minor in pre-law. I'd like to attend York College and study accounting and minor in business administration.
I was hoping to do something in business or perhaps psychology.
I think I want to do something along the lines of being a cinematographer or editing in film.
I want to be a teacher.
I would like to become a high school English teacher and eventually become an English professor.
A kids doctor.
I want to be a pediatrician.
I want to be a surgeon.
A doctor and a veterinarian.
I plan to attend University of Binley and major in pre-bed studies.
I'm going to Centenary for equine studies.
I want to become a youth pastor.
A dad.
A chef.
An artist. An artist.
An architectural engineer.
Football player.
I want to be a president.
A dancer.
I just kind of want to be like superstar.
I hope to pursue a career in music business and performance. I do feel like I'm prepared with the classes I've been taking and like the opportunities I've had to take higher-level courses. The teachers here have really helped me in awakening that passion for finding out how humans and society works.
I feel so confident that I'm going into college. I feel like I can do so many more things because the teachers are so more involved than just, you know, teaching in the classroom.
What does it mean to be Dover proud?
P perseverance.
R is respect.
O, ownership.
U stands for unity.
D dedication.
To me, it means to like strive for your best and be a great student and to help other people when they need to be helped.
To be Dover proud, I think it means that you really enjoy and embrace your school.
Well, Dover is actually pretty awesome.
Mr. Bradshaw always says when we are done like performing or something like that, he always says, "Best band in the land," and I think that really holds true.
All the professional, like industry-standard equipment, we have it here. We do a lot of notable things, either in the classrooms, on athletic fields, in the community. We're always -- we're a pretty tight-knit group here in Dover. Well, it's in the name itself, you know, having pride in, you know, your school, you know, what you come from. Dover proud is just being able to come to the school and leave the day and say, "I'm glad I go to this school. I feel like this school, you know, offers me everything that I can be offered, and I'm gonna use it to the best extent, so."
All right. Please join me in giving a round of applause to our -- I'd also like to recognize at the meeting that we had some really good food. So, and that doesn't come easily, but we had three wonderful individuals who showed up to help us do that. So I'd like to recognize Joanne Burns, Reagan is at Heisey. And the last presentation for this evening under number three is a budget update. So I'd like to invite Mr. Keighley and Mrs. Benko to come up to the podium to talk a little bit about that. Thank you. Thank you. As was -- I was introduced. Mr. Keighley, I have been helping with the transition here in the business office. And one of the things that I did when I came in immediately was to immerse myself in some statistics that had been -- that are available on the Department of Education website. Shared those statistics with Mr. Cherry, and he suggested that perhaps I would share them with you, and you might find them interesting. It helped immerse myself in the school district and get a flavor of it. And I think by sharing it with you, give you the opportunity to translate just what you know intuitively about the school district into an objective understanding. Also might help you with conveying some financial information to the public. Also, we're going to go into this evening some preliminary information about the budget because you will be asked later on in the meeting to make a very important motion, adopt a very important motion involving the Act One resolution. So this all is giving you some background for that. First thing I looked at was the aid ratio of the school district. And you can see that, may surprise you, may not, that Dover area has the second-highest aid ratio in York County. Now, what that means is that by state standards, as a measure of relative wealth per student, Dover is really considered to be the second-poorest school district in York County. Let me explain that. It's the total wealth, total real estate wealth of the school district plus the income of the school district divided by the number of students. So intuitively, you know districts like York Suburban and Southern and West Shore, you tend to think of as wealthy school districts, and Red Line and Northeastern. You tend not to, only because that Dover is the kind of a school district that has high-density housing, not a lot of commercial development, not a lot of hotels, not a lot of those kinds of property-tax-based things that would denote a wealthy school district. The next item that I looked at was really the population of Dover School District. Dover School District is, in York County, about an average school district in terms of student body. ADM means average daily membership. So your student body is average in York County with about 3,900 students. But in Pennsylvania, it is one of the larger school districts because York County and South Central Pennsylvania as a whole tend to have large school districts. The next item that you might find interesting is the expenditures per student. Expenditures per student is a relatively simple calculation. Simply takes your total budget and divides it by the number of students that you have, the ADMs. By the way, I didn't mention that all this information is as of June 30th of 2014, which is the most recent available package of information that's on the Department of Education website. So you can see there that Dover, in terms of spending per student, is the fourth-lowest in York County. Hard to correlate this particular statistics. People write doctoral s theses on trying to correlate spending per student to lots of different things. So it's hard for me to really make a connection with what this really means other than it's an interesting talking point in case someone comes up to you and says, "You're spending too much money per student in Dover School District." And you can honestly say, "Well, we're in the lowest quartile of York County and among the lowest spending per student in the state." And those are all true statements. Another statistic that I looked at to try to get a feel of how I would move forward in some budgetary areas is the, what we call equalized mills. Equalized mills, I deserve some explanation. As you know, taxation in York County, real estate taxation in Pennsylvania, is based on millage, which is .001 times the assessed value of property. So when we talk about taxes, we talk about mills. Now, when the state, when the Commonwealth comes up with a calculation to determine whether a school district imposes a heavy tax burden on its residents, it uses a statistic called equalized mills, which not only considers real estate tax, but includes income. So this statistic is actually real estate tax value plus income divided by the number of students that you have, and then they compare them to all the other school districts around you. In York County, the tax burden that you impose on your residents is the second-highest. In Pennsylvania, it's in probably about the top 20% or so. And again, that is a statistic that includes income. The other interpretation that you need to make also is the, as I mentioned, the real estate values and the fact that you don't have apartment buildings and those kind of things. So those kind of school districts do tend to have a higher tax burden. Then, knowing that, what we looked at was the notion of fund balance. And this all kind of wraps into the whole issue of school district finance and where we go forward with our budget. Fund balance is a measure of the district's general fund, and I want to emphasize that. The school district has lots of different funds. Right now, we're just talking about the general fund. So Dover's general fund balance, which is the difference between its assets and liabilities, not cash, but you can think of it as cash. It's kind of close to cash. But Dover has the largest fund balance in York County, and we're ranging those fund balances there from top to bottom. The other thing that you need to think about when you think about fund balance, however, is the overall size of your budget. Because the larger your budget, obviously, you're going to have a larger fund balance, at least most school districts would. So the next statistic we looked at was the fund balance as a percentage of your expenditure budget. So Dover has about 28% or so of its fund balance determined by taking the fund balance divided by the total budget. That comes out to 28%. And again, those are arranged from high to low. Fund balance is always a difficult item to discuss among school board members because you never really know for sure how much is enough. So that's why it's helpful, I think, to look at fund balances of other school districts. It's called the Delphi method. So what does everybody else do, and then range ourselves among that. So there we are with that statistic. We also started to think about, okay, if we do have a large fund balance, how did it get to be large? And it gets to be large by an accumulation of operating surpluses. I don't want to call them profits because that's not the correct term in school district accounting. We call them operating surpluses. And I wanted to see whether the fund balance was large and stayed that way or if it collectively grew to that size. So for the last four years, we looked at the difference between your revenues and expenditures year by year. And you can see that, on average, your surpluses are about $1.25 million. And accumulatively, that's why your fund balance is increasing year by year. The other thing that we wanted to get a handle on was whether the operating surplus was consistent with the budget. And what we discovered when we looked there was that, as a rule, you're budgeting deficits, and then when the actual information comes in, you're showing surpluses. So what we have as statistic here is how much we missed the budget by. Now, let me just stop and say that, from a financial standpoint, this is great news, that you are in excellent financial condition for planning purposes. You have lots of money to do, move forward and do the things that you want to do with building and those other kinds of things. So it's kind of a good news and bad news scenario as we were looking at it here because, yeah, it's great to have those kinds of fund balances, but one of the concerns that you might draw from this is that was it an accident that this happened, or was it a plan that this happened? Then we look, then what I looked at was the revenue. And consistently, we are under-budgeting revenue. And you can look at the expenditures. And consistently, we are over-budgeting expenditures. So any business manager, any school board that I've ever worked with, does that to a certain degree. It's a cautious, it's a conservative way to budget. It's a conservative way to plan. You tend to go a little bit easy on your revenue estimates, and you want to go a little bit over on your expenditure estimates so that you never get yourself short, you never get yourself in financial difficulty. The art and the challenge of budgeting, however, is the degree by which you do that. So Mr. Cherry and Jen and I got together and talked about, okay, if we want to have planned surpluses, if we want to plan for the future, that's okay. But let's try to develop a system whereby we can do that in a way that we know exactly where we are, and we can be very deliberate in how we plan. So that whereas our general fund balance over the last five years, as you can see here, has consistently grown and grown and grown to the point that it, right now, is approaching $20 million, and that's actually a year behind the PDE figures that I showed you because those were 2014 figures. These are current 2015 figures, that you have a general fund balance that approaches $20 million, which, as I said, is good news, but perhaps it wasn't a deliberate $20 million. In the future, what we want to be able to do is to have a budget reporting system and a budgetary control system whereby our estimates are close, closer than what we have been experiencing for the last four years or so. So I'll turn it over to Jen now, and she can tell you about the program that we collectively have put together to ensure that we know exactly what it is we're doing with our budget.
Good evening. So moving forward, of course, from Dell's presentation and the fact that we do have a nice, healthy fund balance, how we kind of mitigate the buildup of that even more. The business office is now, we are implementing processes for monthly analysis and monthly projections. Each month, as a part of your Treasurers' report that you receive, the business office is going to provide you the status of the revenues and expenditures as of the end of the prior month. So in January, you now are approving December's, which is great. You know, we're all caught up there. And that is, will be compared to the budget numbers. Those monthly projections will also include to the end of the current fiscal year. So you'll see on the December 15 Treasurers' report that you have in front of you now, that there's a column there that says, "Projections to 6/30/15." That is going to be a moving target each month. So we will go back each month and kind of look at things, how things went for that month, and move our projections from there. So speaking about projections, we kind of dove into what our projected 6/30/16 balances will be, and also preliminarily for the budget for 16/17. So if you look here on this slide, at 6/30/16, we budgeted to be at about $54.8 million in revenue. I'm projecting out right now, $56.1 will be our actual. And for the preliminary budget for 16/17, I am predicting right now $57.78 million. Now, these numbers are definitely based on assumptions. And as everybody knows, the state budget is up in the air, and everything changes daily. So it's hard to keep track of where that's going. What the district knows right now, though, and what our projections are based on, is that at this point, we are -- that, at this point, we are being given our basic education funding that we received last year, it was approximately $10.8 million. We're receiving about 45% of that here in January. And then we also received approximately $50,000 more in ready-to-learn grants. I don't know if some of you saw the article that I had sent, we are the lowest increase in York County as far as funding goes. So the basic education funding, we left stagnant for 15/16 and 16/17 at this point, just based on that's where the budget is standing right now. It could go either way. The special education funding that we budgeted, I budgeted for some increases there. The governor's original budget proposal did include these increases. We have heard nothing yet on the special education funding, so I left it as what we are hearing, what we heard originally. The other assumption that we had made, and based on the tax resolution that you have in front of you to sign, or to approve tonight, not going above the 3.3% adjusted increase. The assumption that we made and are recommending is no tax increase and an elimination of the per capita taxes for next year. When we do the analysis on our local revenue, we definitely feel that we can make it through without either one of those. The per capita taxes become a burden on the district to collect. Even though we have the taxpayers collecting them, there's still a enumeration that needs done every month, and it's a lot of work for not a lot of return on that investment. So again, the no tax increase and the elimination of the per capita taxes were assumptions in this preliminary budget. Just a quick note, state subsidy revenue is a moving target day to day, which I mentioned, and it could have a large impact positively or negatively on any of our projections. And at this point, we don't know when the end will be. So unfortunately, I can't give you a drop dead date, but that's where we stand right now. So then, after we took a look and projected our revenues, we looked at our expenditures. Budgeted for 2015/16 was 57.3. Our projected for 2016 is 55.7. And preliminarily budgeted for 16/17 at this point is 57.2. Now, just some of the variances in there between the projected and the budgeted for 15/16. The variances lie in salaries and benefits, and also in technical services is where you're going to see the big one. That is because of us bringing back some of the special education classes from the LIU. So where we're saving in the technical services line, we're expending a little more in salary and benefits for the PCAs and the teacher and the aides and stuff. So that's kind of where that big variance lies in that schedule there. So now that we've taken a look at expenditures, if we could take an overall look at where we're projected to be at the end of 16 and preliminarily 17. With 2016, with revenues at 56.1 and expenditures of 55.6, we are projecting an annual surplus of $430,000, again, subject to change to state subsidies. And then with a 2017 preliminary budget, we're looking at revenues of 57.7 and expenditures of 57.2 with an annual surplus of $582,000. Just a quick note, in 2015/16, a two-point, almost $2.5 million deficit was budgeted, and now we are projecting a surplus of $430,000. And state subsidies, again, could have a very large impact on this either way. Any questions or comments? I know we threw a lot of information out there for you all to digest. I'm happy to take questions now, or anything in the future, please feel free to send me, shoot me an email, call me, whatever you need to do.
I have a quick question for you. And maybe Mr. Keggy, you might be familiar with your work with other districts as well. Is there a typical variance that is assumed, or a typical variance which shows healthy projections? Is it 2%, 3%? What is the magical number that you're looking for from a budget and expenditure in being on, so that we're not having the $2 million surplus each year?
Well, I'll tell you, the school district financial profile is unique from a private sector model, in that in school districts, you have a good handle on where your expenditure stream is going to be, because of your teacher's contract, your salary contract, and so forth. Your revenue stream is also easily determined, except for state subsidies, unfortunately. That's the big variable in Pennsylvania, it shouldn't be that way. I would say what most school districts that I'm familiar with like to do is they use what I call a budgetary reserve concept in their budgeting. And typically, a budgetary reserve is going to be around 1% to 2%. You really, it wouldn't be unusual that you would budget tight and build a budgetary reserve in there in maybe the 2% range. I would, that would be my gut. Now, part two of that question would be, how tightly can you predict as you get into the year? And I think that's actually a more important question, is when you get into the year, let's say in September, at that point, you can almost predict your revenues and expenditures, you know, really within a 1% margin easily. Now, and that's what Jen is going to be working towards with this budget model. Now this year, you know, we started off with a budget probably that's going to be askew, as she mentioned, by maybe 2, 2.5, maybe even $3 million. But I don't see that ever happening again going forward. And one caution that I will make is, when Jen presents these projection reports to you, month to month to month, you're going to see them change. Don't think that that doesn't mean that she doesn't have a handle on things, it's just the opposite. When they change, it means that she does have a handle on things.
I have a question about the per capita tax. You made the recommendation, or threw the idea out there of eliminating the per capita taxes moving forward. How much money do we clear in per capita tax?
It's approximately $130,000.
That's how much we clear and bring into the district?
I can't give you an exact on how much we clear, because we also do pay out for, we did pay out for enumeration services for Dover Township, but we are no longer going to be doing that. So I would say that would be how much we would clear at that point. However, we would have to have somebody in-house doing that work, or hire somebody outside.
One of the, one of the concerns that I would have in eliminating that is, I know part of the governor's plan this year was to reduce property taxes and increase other taxes that would be more applicable to more people, kind of spreading the burden around a little bit more. In a way, the per capita tax does that, and to eliminate that might, in the future, put more burden on real estate taxes once again, and then again, could potentially, you know, hit the elderly, for example, a little bit harder, property owners, and you eliminate that. If we're clearing $100,000 or more, not sure if I'd be really in favor of that, unless there was a good reason why we wouldn't continue, because that affects every taxpayer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can tell you that per capita tax falls into that family that's unique in Pennsylvania of nuisance taxes, which tend to, well, right now, they're being grandfathered out, so nobody can impose new ones, that's how distasteful they are. The new proposals that would be in taxes, like you're talking about, we call tax shift. There's no such thing as tax reform, you know, it's just tax shift, one kind of tax to the other. Would not be to taxes like per capita, they would be over to income taxes. So it's going to be income taxes, sales taxes, those kinds of taxes. But, I mean, I can tell you that per capita tax collection, occupation tax collection are the most inefficient taxes that there are. And the elimination of those would be, I believe, and this is not necessarily a financial decision, but on a political aspect would be, I believe, very well received, and I think would follow a trend that a lot of municipalities are following right now, just to get rid of those kinds of things. So just my background.
Thanks, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
I guess I would have a question from the legal timetable. In light of the way things have been going in Harrisburg lately, where it doesn't seem like timetables mean a whole lot, are we still obligated by the same timetable moving ahead when we still haven't actually gotten 2016?
At this point, at this point, yes, we are. We are, you know, under the guidelines of Act 1. So at this point, we are.
I'm not quite sure how you predict for something that they can't even get last year's squared away yet.
Yeah. You know, it's tough, and like I said, it's a moving target every single day. You know, we are hearing the same thing that you as board members and the taxpayers are hearing out in the public, there's never any clear distinction of, yes, we're going to do this, or no, we're going to do that. It changes day by day. So unfortunately, that's just the environment that we're in right now, and we still have to abide by our deadlines.
It's hard to make sense of it, and as I shared earlier with the board in email, you read one thing one day, and you read another thing the next day, and you're not really quite sure what's coming and what's not, what's promised and what's being held back. But what you're telling us is, we're guaranteed at least what we got last year. That is now approved?
At, at this point in time, that's what we were communicated we were getting.
Okay. Believe it when you see it.
We did see, actually, some funding come in in January, so that, they did have that scheduled, and it's out to us already. It came through, I think, January 6th, though. We did see some of that funding come through, which helps a little bit, but...
One other question, if I might ask. Talked a lot about, or heard a lot about piecers in the last four or five years, and that continues to climb for another two years, I believe it is, yet?
In, I think in 1920, it peaks.
Okay, so a few more...
But we're at that, we're almost at that peak right now. For 16/17, it's 30.03%, I think. And it peaks at 32%. So we're almost there, and the peaks are getting shorter and shorter. So that's where we're at with piecers right now.
Okay. I know that was a big driver in previous years to budget surpluses and putting money back for that sort of thing. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe for the first time in probably four or five years, we're actually looking at a projected budget that has a surplus in it. I can honestly say, I remember seeing that recently. We were always anticipating tapping into reserves, which hasn't happened, and that's part of the increases in the surplus, the general fund, surpluses. So it's good to see.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Keggy and Mrs. Bencot, for that information, very helpful for us. And thank you to our students, staff members as well, for your efforts, your great video and your great food for our meeting that we had had a few months ago. Moving on to communications, we have our student report. I believe we have Sophie Barnes taking care of that tonight.
Julie Fox and Aaron Thomas were unable to be here tonight, so they sent me instead. For news for the district, starting with North Salem, they are pleased to announce that they recently performed their version of the Grinch production. 5th grade also recently received Three Rabbits, which they'll be using for science projects. A new schedule has also been developed to allow for multiple things, one of them being a music program, is starting a jazz band for the musically skilled, and they're also starting a 4th grade band and a guitar program. They also allowed, through the new schedule, they started recess located in the gym, which can be used for indoor recess. And then also, in recent news for North Salem, North Salem Elementary School has been identified as the Title I Distinguished School by the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the second consecutive year. This accomplishment identifies North Salem Elementary as one of the highest Title I schools in the state, and this is based on closing gap, the achievement gap in both reading and mathematics. Only 96 schools throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania have received this award this year, so congratulations to North Salem Elementary. Moving on to Dover Elementary, they have a busy month coming up. Starting January 8th was Proud Ticket Day. Students wore clothing denoting the Proud Ticket color for their grade level. Also, January 13th was Buckle Book Assembly, and this assembly encouraged students to read books in school and at home, which they receive select prizes for. Then January 22nd, which is coming up, is Twin Day, which is where two students or teachers will decide to dress similar to each other. Then January 28th and 29th, Ag Mobile Lessons will be taught to their 4th grade students, and they also will be having a swim party at the Intermediate School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Moving on to Waggles Town, December is their Focus on Kindness Month at Waggles Town Elementary. They started the month by collecting items for the district food drive. Waggles Town collected the most building items, and Mrs. Meckley's 4th grade class collected the most items for a single classroom, for a single classroom in the entire district. All students also made cards and pictures for the residents at Providence Place. Then Student Council representatives delivered them on December 23rd, and they also sang carols while they were there. Also, in celebration of Computer Science Education Week, December 7th to 13th, Waggles Town Elementary 4th grade classrooms participated in the Hour of Code. Now, the Hour of Code is a global movement, reaching tens of millions of students in over 180 countries. The students participated in a one-hour introduction to computer sciences, where students learned the basics of computer programming through interactive themed puzzles. The classes then discussed the career opportunities in the future that they would use these experiences. Now LIB, their Eagles on the Run program started on January 5th. They meet every Tuesday and Thursday after school for physical fitness and character building. Also, Envirethon practice started on January 7th, and it occurs before school. This year, they brought back a team for grades 5th and 6th, so now that they have two teams. The other team is for grades 3rd through 4th, and both will compete in the York County Envirethon this spring. LIB is our second, LIB is in their second year of the STEM program. Their first Friday afternoon of every month, their classes in grades 4th through 6th conduct a specific lesson and experiment. Also, the LIB PTO is sponsoring a family night at the Hershey Bears game on Saturday, January 30th. Now moving up to the Intermediate School report, the Intermediate School students will once again participate in the Pennies for Patience fundraiser. Last year, the students raised over $8,000 in change, and they were recognized as one of the top 100 schools in the country. If you see a 7th or 8th grade student from February 1st through February 26th, be sure to have some change in your pocket to give to them. Second, the Winter Band and Choral Concert showcased their Intermediate School talent as each group performed exceptional shows. Our Select Ensemble, which is a singing group, also showed off their talents by performing at the York County Courthouse, as well as other venues during the winter break. Lastly, their Students of the Month for the month of January include Emily L., Madison P., Faith S., Pete T., Maisy S., Brianna G., Damian G., and Shaylan B. Lastly, for the high school, this past Saturday, which was January 16th, from 7:00 to 10:00, they had their first ever Sadie Hawkins Snowball Dance, which was in the cafeteria, and it was sponsored by the Executive Council, which is a new program at the high school. Also, Keystone exams for algebra and biology occurred on January 6th, 7th, 8th, and 11th, and this brought us into the new semester, which includes new classes, new teachers, new lunches for everyone in the high school. Also, the band Midwinter Pops Concert happened on January 9th and was a great success, thanks to Mr. Bradshaw and the band. Also, many of the high school students are well aware, due to the chill, that we're getting new windows installed in the building. So that's a process, as they're removing and replacing some windows throughout the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. You must be exhausted after that report. A lot of good information, good stuff. Thank you. Students, you're more than welcome to stay, but we know you're also busy and have a lot of schoolwork to do as well, so you may also leave if you wish, it's up to you. But thank you very much for being here. But thank you very much for being here tonight. Okay. Next item on the agenda is our public comment period. This is for items on or off the agenda. If you would like to make a comment, feel free to come to the microphone, and this is for a three-minute period of time for each speaker. Please state your name and address so we have that for the public record.
Madeline Schermeier, 3771 Admar Road, Dover Township. A few weeks ago, I read an article in the newspaper, I think it was a proposal looking at the next five years by Mr. Cherry, and he said that you may be looking at a new high school. This was only a five-year projection, don't get me wrong, I know that, a new high school, and having the intermediate school as an elementary school, moving the intermediate school over to the high school, because you're looking at possibly an influx of 1,000 students in the next five years. Well, I think you read it, you get an abstract from the township, the same way as we always did at supervisors. Correct? I thought that's what the zoning officer told me. So I'm trying to figure out where this thousand new students are coming from. So I called zoning officer. She said she has no idea, because that last period that she wrote about was the largest that she had in the whole year of 2015. She had two single-family homes built, and over in Fairwind, they have a 55 and over development over there. And now, the over 55 developments, by state law, they always had to allow 10% or 20% of the people that wanted to move in there with children. Okay? That was governed by the state. I don't know how many live there with children, but there were only two of those built over there, and that's the most she had. And I said, well, where would we get these thousand extra students? She said, we won't, because it's not going to happen. You're going to have to have a lot of development, home development in Dover Township. That's the bottom line. Or Dover area, let me put it that way, not just Dover Township, but in a township. I just couldn't imagine where it was coming from. But I do know that it was a five-year proposal, you know, they were looking ahead for five years. And having been a politician for 18 years, why, I kind of knew, you know, where our development was going. And it was mentioned about, we don't have businesses. While I was still in office, we rezoned so much land north of Dover for business parks, industrial development, and so forth. I also read an article from PCE, Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. If you don't have a major highway, like Route 30, or, you know, coming into your community, you're not going to get a lot of the business and the light industrial that you really need. Okay? That's the bottom line. And that's what's holding Dover, I can't speak for anyone else, but that's what's holding Dover Township back. We don't have the major roads coming into Dover Township. And since it was mentioned that we don't have the motels and, you know, all this, I just thought I'd put that in there. Okay? Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Schermeier. Is there anyone else for public comment? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on the agenda. Next section is Board President's Communication, the announcement of executive sessions. We did have two executive sessions. The first was on January 7th, and the second was today, January 19th, for legal and personnel matters. The next item under Board President's Communication is the DAEA grievance for 2015-2016, number one. Is there a motion to deny the DAEA grievance, number one? I will make that motion. I will move that we deny the DAEA grievance for 2015-16, number one. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Bencow, can we have the vote? Board members, you should be getting a pop-up soon to cast your ballot. All votes have been, have been cast, and it appears as though the motion to deny is I will move to deny DAEA grievance 2015-16, number two. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And the motion carries eight to one.
Can we just go back here to the, you had this as motion by Kelly Metford, second by Kelly Metford?
Okay. Next section on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I move that the school board approves the minutes of the November 17th, 2015 Board Planning Meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing none. Mrs. Bencow, set up the vote. Motion carries. I move that the school board approve the minutes of the November 19th, 2015 Regular Board Meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing none.
Mr. Rahouser, your vote did not cast.
And the motion carries.
I move that the school board approve the minutes of the December 1st, 2015 Board Reorganization Meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
There's a typographical error there under item number F. It's misspelling.
All right. I'll have Amy correct. It's the item F.
Kelly Metford just needs to...
Okay.
Oh, man. That stupid thing.
Mr. Emmick, would you like me to cast the vote for you?
No, I'm getting there. I'm getting there.
Okay.
All right. And the motion carries. Moving on the agenda to the consent agenda, I will move that the school board approve all items listed under the consent agenda. And these are the starred items that you see on the screen. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Thought we pulled some things.
We did. We are pulling the transfers, which is item E under Human and Fiscal Resources, item K under Human and Fiscal, which is the resolution not to exceed the index, and item L, the per capita exonerations. Those would be the three items that were coming up for separate votes.
I did have a couple of questions regarding these items on the independent study. I was just curious, there's 11 individuals there, but we only had three attachments there as a description. I was just curious if that's something when a student wants to take an independent study, are they required to fill out a same form that these three did?
All the information is sent in to Jamie. I'm not sure why it's not there, but we can make certain that it is. But yeah, they have to fill everything, because the actual instructor has to.
See, here it says, the ones with a star are new, the ones that have the attachments are brand-new courses, the other ones who've already approved, so that's...
So what am I putting in the consent?
And then the council knows the students, and if it fits into their schedule, then the students already approve the independent study, they just put them in. That's why there's a consent.
That makes sense. Thank you.
But they do submit everything in writing, from the teacher and from the student and so forth, so we keep everything on file here in the office.
Okay. Sounds good. Just curious about the field trip, which is on this item here as well, the DECA field trip. Total trip cost there was $95.50. District cost is only $5.50. I'm assuming that that is correct, and that the rest of the money is done through fundraising and that sort of thing.
Yes, it is. Yeah, we're raising the rest.
Compared to last year, if I remember, this team is substantially larger compared to...
From seven to 31 students.
Exactly. Compared, so that's why you see the drastic increase. But like I said, they are covering costs.
And the last question that I had is in regards to the high school graduation requirements. I was just curious if you could maybe get a background in what all's changing there. I know there's a lessening of graduating credits needed. I was wondering, is this aligning with something?
If you remember back in November, I did a presentation where I stated that we would bring some things forth from the high school. So we've been meeting fairly regularly every Friday to kind of talk about that. So in that discussion, we've got to remember, the state owner requires us to have 21 credits in order for anyone to graduate. So when we did kind of a survey of other districts around, ours kept continuing to climb every year, but everyone else kind of was holding tight to that 23, 24, 25. So we too wanted to kind of make sure that as we shift the high school a little bit and begin to think about what we want to be good at, which is the core programming, that's why we kind of said 24 is going to be the magic number. We fairly are stagnant with our academics. A lot of our previous requirements that we have are still there in the building, but we now just labeled them as elective, so the kids will still have opportunities to take those classes. We just won't be requiring them to take them in order to graduate. So like I said, it's easy to say that every student will still have the same opportunities that they currently have, it's just that we're not requiring them or forcing them to take them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
We're good.
You're sure, Mrs. Herman?
I might yell in the middle if something's there. Okay. I think I'm good.
All right. Motion carries nine, nothing. Moving on to transfers, I move that we, the school board approves the involuntary transfers as listed in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I will need to abstain from this because one of the transfers is a family member.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Okay. Motion carries with seven yays, one nay, and one abstention. Next item is per capita. I move that the school board approves the per capita exonerations as included in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comments?
Once again, I'll have to abstain from this one as well, because family member's on the list.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Motion carries with eight yays, one abstention. And the last item to vote on in this section, I move that the school board approves the board resolution not to exceed the index of 3.3%, adjusted for the 2016-17 budget, and grant approval to submit the resolution and preliminary PDE 2028 budget to PDE. Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Okay. Motion carries with nine yays. Moving on to the next items in the agenda, we'll jump to number 14, the Dover Eagle Foundation. I can report that the foundation had a meeting recently where there was discussion held regarding a possible grant program where all six of our buildings would benefit from grants either by the end of this school year or the beginning of next, and to launch some fundraising programs for the foundation. So there's some exciting stuff coming out here. Hopefully, our staff will keep their eyes open for the opportunity to get some money for your buildings at this point. Next item on the agenda is our legislative liaison, Mr. Rahouser.
Well, there's not much positive news to report. I met with Seth the other week. He said that, I guess he was going to look into it, because he's involved in the district, he's a taxpayer representative, and has a child in school, that we were only getting $50,000, and that we were classified with York Suburban in Dallas Town, which he was trying to figure out while we were put in the same category as them two schools.
Any questions for Mr. Rahouser? Okay. LIU and Special Education, we do not have anything to report there at this time. PSBA, we do still need a representative from the board, so if anybody is interested in taking care of that role for us, if they would just contact Mr. Cherry at some point... Mr. Cherry at some point, we'll move from there. Next item is York Adams Academy. Mr. Emmig?
Yeah, I had sent an email out to everybody. Those of you that are available tomorrow night is the winter graduation, which will place at 7:00 PM at the old former Central York High School. And they do have seats reserved for any school board representative coming. And then on Tuesday, the 26th, will be our next committee board meeting.
And I believe we have three students who will be graduating. I remember counting that correctly.
Any questions for Mr. Emmig? Okay, next item is the York County School of Technology. Mr. Delauter.
One thing we do have is I'd like to make a motion to approve the York County School of Technology general operating budget for the 2016-2017 school year.
I'll second. Any questions or discussion on that?
I just want to say that in the formulation of this budget, the joint operating committee, we spent several sessions having spirited debate on this. What you see here as a budget, I think, is a, for them, is a bare bones budget. Some of us wanted to see some other things included in this budget, but unfortunately, trying to keep costs down, they were not added to that. So again, from coming from Dover, like I said, it is a bare bones budget and I think a very responsible budget from the school.
And I'll add on, as a group of superintendents, we spent a lot of time pushing back originally. So I think in the end, what they presented to us is something that we could leave. Because we're also part of that approval process too. We typically meet with the York County School of Technology in the fall when they present the budget. We obviously list our concerns and things of that nature. So they responded and they listened and we got a couple additions of this. And we're very, very pleased with the last one that we have here.
What is the change compared to this year's budget?
It's 1.2.
I'm sorry?
It's 1.2.
1.2?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Can I just make another comment real quick on that? And I think I've said this before, but I'd like to say it again. For those of us who are from the old school, knowing as the York Votech, a lot of positive things are going on in that school. A lot of career opportunities, updated career opportunities are coming along. They have actually, are being recognized in the state as one of the better, if not the best vocational technical school in the state. So again, I think it's a good program and just wanted to put that out there for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Delauter. Mr. Cherry?
Yes, so I have a few updates here. One, I just wanted to thank everyone that was associated with helping getting our Friday professional development session up and running. Friday, we had the opportunity to work with kindergarten through eighth grade teachers over at North Salem. So Mr. Cobb, thank you for hosting. And it was a very eventful day. Even myself, I delivered six sessions that day to groups of teachers and so forth. So teachers had the opportunity to sign up for the professional development they wanted. It really stemmed from a group of us attending the SAS Institute. So we kind of brainstormed afterwards, what are some things that we'd like to reintroduce our staff to? Nothing new, but just saying, hey, you may have forgotten about this because sometimes in education, and I'm certainly guilty of it, we do something and we do it a long time and then we kind of forget to go back and take a look. So that day was really viewed at taking a look at standards and what does the online SAS website have for our students or for our teachers to actually utilize. So I think what was core to this particular professional development was the fact that we had teachers delivering the sessions as well. So not only was it myself, or was it Jamie, or was it Kathy, Bob, actually, all the principals presented. Mr. Cobb had a spirited game of, what was that?
Hundred thousand dollar pyramid.
Hundred thousand dollar pyramid going on in his session as a review. But beside each one of us were actually teachers who were doing the work each and every day. So I thought it was a very fruitful day, well spent, and I believe our teachers got a lot out of that. Next, all of our building principals right now are completing their school-based budgets. So one of the things I asked Dale and Jen to do was to really take a look at this concept of school-based budgeting, meaning that the principals need to own parts of those dollars that come into the district. So through that process, we were able to develop a budget for each one of the buildings based on students and also based on below basic and advanced proficiency rates on the PSSAs and/or Keystone's. So now principals are responsible for meeting with members of their communities, kind of talking about how should we best spend this money in our school. So we look forward to getting that information back to them by the end of February, is what I gave them. So I'll be meeting with them to look at their staffing models and they'll be meeting with their communities to talk about how best to spend some of those extra dollars that are coming into the schools. We have committee meetings that will begin to start on Thursday. They will start here at 6 o'clock. Just to review safe and supportive schools, you'll continue to be in the library. Our finance and HR committee will continue to be on the second floor conference room. And we will post all of this information on our website. The comprehensive planning group will meet here in the boardroom, while our curriculum group will meet in the board executive room. Our facilities group will meet on the second floor dining room area, so it's an area up on the second floor there. And then our technology group will meet in room 110 in Dover Elementary. So once again, we've expanded our committee opportunities for those who are interested in coming out and getting involved in the district. So please be here at 6 o'clock and you can participate in those activities in each one of those groups. We already touched on the annual report in our December meeting, so that's, once again, just thanking all of our businesses who came out. Skyward, we continue to move forward with Skyward, our new student information system. I know a lot of people asked about the implementation of that, so I just want to let you know that Brad, Mr. Perkins, has placed a calendar of events on our website. So if you're interested in learning about how that's going to be rolled out, implemented, all of that information is available for you on that website. I had my first meeting with my superintendent's council, so I have a group of professional staff that I will begin to meet with on a monthly basis to kind of talk about mission and vision, as well as what's going on in the district. So it's our opportunity to kind of close door, no agenda, talk about what's working, what's not working. And I really had a really good time with that group of, those teachers who came out to participate in that, and I look forward to working with them on a monthly visit, on a monthly chance. So my last comment happens to deal with something that will be coming our way on Friday, and that is all the snow that they're talking about. So I just bring this up because this is always the time where I'm either flooded with "I love you" emails or "I hate you" phone calls. So just know that when we take a look at whether or not schools should be open or closed, whether or not we should come in early or we come in late, it's really about the transportation of students. And we also need to remember that geographically, we're a very large district. So when we're out at 4:00 in the morning, driving on streets while everyone's still at home sleeping, and people are slipping and sliding, or I'm getting a report about roads while that person's car happens to be in a ditch to tell me that it's not safe, you know, we're out there doing our due diligence to make sure that we can get every single child who takes transportation in the district to school safely. So, you know, where we may look in the borough and we say, oh, it's perfect here in the borough, it looks great, when we're driving roads in the township, and it's a completely different story, or we're heading up to Washington Township and we see slippery roads there, we have to make the call in the fact that if we can't get every student to the building safely, then we either need to delay or to close and so forth. So I just, I try to put that out there just to remind people that we do a lot of work. Mr. Nelson and I are speaking very early in the morning on those days, looking out windows, sitting in cars. The bus company that we have is also driving the roads. So he kind of drives some of our trickier streets and areas where we know that buses may slide or may not have the opportunity to be as safe as others. And we will do our best, as we tried to last year, by 5:30, make the decision and then begin to do the Global Connects, update Facebook, send it out on Twitter. We're all prepared with the local television stations and radio stations to make those calls. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that we really try to do our best. I think last year, I was off for, by 15 minutes, and I probably got land blasted because I didn't make a 5:30 call and I made a 5:45 call. But a lot of that time is also coordination with other districts, because when we have kids going to other districts or going to other opportunities, we also have to have time to talk to those superintendents too and say, hey, if I decide to close, what's the impact for you if I have 20 kids coming to your program? Or even vice versa, we have some students who are being transported by our buses as well. So note that we will continue to do our best, but at the bottom of every decision that we make, it's really making sure that we get all of our students here to school safely and/or home safely as we think about the snow. So I thought it was a nice opportunity with the 15 to 28 inches that they're calling for, for Friday and Saturday. So that's all I have.
Any board members with questions or comments for Mr. Cherry? I've heard anywhere from nothing to 36 inches, so good luck with your efforts on Friday and Saturday.
It's getting closer now, so I'm fine with that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cherry. Next item on the agenda is our miscellaneous category. Are there any comments or concerns that other board members would like to discuss at this time?
I had about 5,000 questions to ask, but because we had such a fast executive session, I didn't get to ask them all. The conference that we voted for tonight, the DECA, what is DECA?
I'll let Chuck go.
DECA is a student-run organization for marketing, accounting, business, entrepreneurship. It's a nationally-run organization, just like FFA, just like Skills USA. So that's our, there's a local, state, and then national competitions for our students. Last year, we started out with six students. We are now up to an active of 49 students in one year. So we took seven to states. This year, we're taking 31 to states. We had one student qualify for national competition last year, so we're seeing where we go after states.
Where's nationals held?
This year, we'll be at Nashville. Last year, it was in Tampa.
Oh, so it's, it could be anywhere. Like this one at Hershey, that could be different places in the state?
No, the state's always held at Hershey. And our regional one is held up right off of Union Deposit Road in Harrisburg.
Are those the kids that run the store?
They're a part of it, yes. Yes. So most of them are in our business programs. So there's a few outliers that come in and have only taken one or two classes, but most of the students are in our, are in our programs of studies in our business department. And it's, every program of study has to have a student-run organization, and that goes with our business programs of study.
I noticed it was really expensive, so at first I was like, whoa, but it sounds like they...
It comes down to about $325 per kid. So, but when you times that by 31, that's what you're...
But they, it sounded to me like they were supplying the funds, except for a small amount.
They're doing fundraisers and everything to make this happen. It's a student-run organization.
It really, yeah.
So we're proud of them. They're doing well. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's all.
Maybe next time.
I would just like to make a note under the donation center that we had 11, over $11,000 that was donated to the district, two of which $10,000 coming from Eagle Lacrosse and then another $1,300 from the Wild Turkey Federation, a huge sum of money which provides some amazing opportunities for our students. So I would just like to make sure that we recognize those donations and send out a nice thank you letter for the money.
I just want to recognize, I apologize. Go.
Okay. Thank the students from Dover that participated in the farm show with their exhibits that they had. Some students got good television coverage on Saturday at the rodeo. And also seeing when I was up there at the Dover FFA chapter, got second prize in their exhibit they had there.
Am I good?
Yeah.
All right. Making sure. I just want to recognize, we had three retirements on the agenda for this evening, so Beth Kenworthy, Carol Leatherie, and Cynthia Edmunds. So we just want to thank them for their commitment to the school district and wish them the best of luck.
I had a question regarding, or actually, a question on my mind regarding the York County School of Technology. I was looking at the information that was provided in that budget analysis, and if I understand it right, we're the fourth leading school as far as number of students in the consortium of all the schools that send students there. It made me wonder what kind of career paths our students that are attending there are pursuing, and if that is in fact things we don't offer, or if it's, you know, if they've chosen to still attend there. Just curious, would it be possible to maybe get an update of what kind of career paths our students are going there?
Yeah, we'll get, we get an enrollment summary now every single month. So one of the things I'll ask for is what program they're in, and I'll try to group that up so that you can get a better understanding of kind of what they have chosen down at the school.
Yeah, as much as, as much as we're doing here as well, there's still a lot of our students that are going there. I was curious what they're taking.
Right. Yeah, we can get that. That's easy.
Any other board members? Okay, moving on to the agenda, we've reached our second public comment period. This is a two-minute period for items on or off the agenda. If you have anything that you would like to say, please come forward to the microphone. And please state your name and address for the record.
Does it matter which one?
No.
Christine Keener, 5801 K, Crone Road. Also the tax collector for Dover Township. I want to say a little bit about the per capita. I'm not pro or con, so I'll tell you that right up front. But the town, as you all know, the township has eliminated their per capita for 2016. I have people in my office, because I'm on the front line, they don't mind the township eliminating, but they don't want their real estate increased. That's all, you know. They don't mind it, but don't mess with their, their real estate. They don't want to see that increased just because you decide to eliminate. The other comment I have is the numerator isn't really that much. It's about $6,000 that she would cost, he or she. Do you have any other questions about the per capita that I could answer? Nope. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Keener. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Future meeting announcements. For the board, there will be an executive session immediately following this meeting, so we'll go back into the conference room for a few moments to discuss legal and personnel matters. And as Mr. Cherry had mentioned earlier, we do have the board committee meetings this Thursday, beginning at 6:00 PM, and then the board planning meeting on Thursday at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
We're going to do a voice vote on this one. Make it easy. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming.